We have a short agenda tonight. We have an FY24 budget item and we have an executive session. We also have a couple of consent agenda items. One is just the sort of a replay of last meeting, thanks to Mr. Brady's catch on some elementary school books. And so we need to revote the disposal of the surplus technology. And the other is a grant that is in your folder that Dr. Ellen Emma has asked us if we could consider this evening. If with committee's permission, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda items unless anyone has questions.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Nixon?
Hi.
Mr. Brady?
Hi.
Ms. Bolanese?
I just had a quick question about the disposal of technology items.
Okay.
Oh, I just, I guess I thought that it was different from, I thought women.
Oh, you're right. It is. I was thinking it was the same one, Karen. This is technology. You're right.
Okay, all right. So I, yeah, okay.
I was thinking.
Eye on the technology and the grant.
Okay, and Chair votes aye, vote is unanimous, heard Mr. Hopcroft also. And with that, we would like the committee's permission to take the meeting a little bit out of order. We would like to move the consideration of the FY24 budget for town meeting ahead of the executive session this evening. So if I could just get a nod or a thumbs up for consensus on that, that we can move that to the front of the meeting, I'd appreciate it. Hearing no objections, Dr. Hackett and Mr. Rowe, I think that we will move that forward.
Okay, thank you everybody. Good evening, everyone. Wanted to bring to you an adjusted budget recommendation. As you all know, we were in front of the finance committee last week. But for us, this has been an ongoing, ongoing project. We've done a lot of work on the budget even since the adoption, your adoption in January, at the end of January. We have continued to, as we've implemented the new contract for not only this year, but for next year as well. And as we've continued to get firmer on our actual enrollments and on our actual retirements. We are in a position at this point as, that we weren't in, in January, because we didn't really know for sure how it was going to break. To be able to come to you tonight with a, with a recommendation for an adjustment. So just going to really kind of take it at a higher level. This is, as you know, the actual budget that you did vote and approved on January 31st. It is 4.17% over the current year budget of $60,904,378. Within that budget, there is an addition of, or the transfer of an athletic trainer contract position into the actual, into actual employment position, which was a delta of about $17,850 for us to bring that position online. We talked about the reasons for that, including inconsistent ability to contract that service. And also the fact that that position had actually been in our budget and was an employee of ours years ago. Not too many years ago, actually. Then we brought to you a .4 FTE Mandarin position at the high school increase to bring that position to at that point, .8. You, as a committee, debated and had the conversation and made the decision to make an adjustment upward to add an additional .2 to that. So the total adjustment was an increase of .6 FTE for Mandarin at the high school. That is the continued program that we already have. It's not a new program. It's an expansion of existing program to service the students who are coming up through the high school at this point and coming in from the middle school for next year. And then we also, we obviously have the contracted transportation fees. That does not include the Lynch transportation, but that was the originally negotiated three-year contract that ends next year with, with our general education contract provider. At that point, we also recommended to you or shared with you that we believe that we would be making and be able to make a reduction of free elementary section positions. At that time, we weren't clear exactly on what positions those were going to be. Essentially, it was dependent upon the retirements that came in, whether we received enough elementary retirements. And then once we knew what those were, we would be able to determine what that total reduction would be. Since that time, we have, we do know that number. We were very close. But I'll show you the adjustment that we're recommending to that number, to that reduction tonight. So that totaled a $63 million budget for a 4.17% increase. Tonight, what we're recommending to you is a little bit of a reduction. Not going to go through all of what I just went through, but I'll just take you to the third from the last row. We've been, we are making a slight adjustment to that amount. That is a 3.0 full-time FTE reduction in elementary sections. These are positions, these are people who have retired and they're positions that we will not be replacing. So we are able to take the full actual salary of the retirees on the way out and what they would have made next year. And we're able to take that as a full reduction with no net of what it would cost us to actually replace people for those positions. Additionally, we're in a position where our retirements have also netted out that we believe that, we don't believe we know and feel very comfortable recommending an additional reduction of $248,793. And I'm just going to give you a high-level breakout of that. So we have the three elementary reductions with a slight adjustment that we talked to you about in January. In addition to that, the $248,793 represents a five retirements and the corresponding estimated replacement costs for those positions. So these are, these are people who are retired. These are positions that are open and these are positions that we need to fill. So in the net, taking the, the amount of money, the salary amount of the retirees, the five retirees on the way out. And then factoring in essentially an average of about a master's six-level replacement. We are at a $248,793 reduction. So this budget with this adjustment represents a total personnel line reduction of $603,998. This presentation has been shared with you. It should be within your email if you have not yet seen it. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there questions from the committee about this? Dr. Hackett, can you define a master's plus six-level position? Does that allow us to hire experienced educators into that role?
Absolutely. I think, and I'm not entirely sure, but Lori can speak to this. But I believe that previously we have, the school system has looked to hire around M3, M2 or M3. Lori, is that accurate? And we've just found over the last couple of years, as you all know, with the job market and the, the smaller pools of candidates that we've been receiving that we, and we have been faced and were faced over the last couple of years with hiring at a little bit of a higher level. So we were factoring in at about a M6.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brady?
I appreciate all the work that you and Peter and Andrew and others have done on this. So thank you for that. Frank and I had spoken earlier today and I had an idea that I wanted to put forward to the committee. And I'll probably be interested in making a motion on it later. But given this savings from the original budget that we requested. I, I want us to consider, and I would propose that basically the savings would cover all of our athletic costs. So I, and I, if I'm incorrect on that, please someone correct me. But I think with those savings, we could say that we wouldn't have to charge any athletic fees next year. And I'd like to propose we do that.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Dr. Hackett, given that suggestion, can you or Mr. Rowe let us know just in broad strokes, how much the athletic fees and other fees as well might be if we were to consider, you know, reducing the burden that parents pay, and what sort of the options are there and how much of an impact that could have?
Mr. Rowe, you want to field that?
Yeah, sure. The, the revenue we expect this year, I am, yeah, I'm unmuted. The revenue we expect this year is in the high fives. So it would be somewhere 580,000 to 600,000, approximately what we expect to bring in for revenue from the, from parents paying. We currently fund approximately half. So we actually, this year it's 547,000. Next year it's going to be a little bit more because we committed to the trainer. So it's, we're funding from the general fund, 564,000.
And are there other categories of fees that the parents are paying for other activities?
For athletics?
No, for drama, for other things.
Yes, yes. There are other activities where parents pay for student, for instance, music lessons, some participation in things like musicals, those kinds of things. So parents do pay other fees.
Dr. Hackett, can you refresh my memory? Did we talk about establishing a fee committee to look at fees for the, for the next, in the next year? Wasn't that one of the recommendations out of the finance subcommittee? That we evaluate all the fees that parents pay?
It was.
Okay. And do we still have a structural deficit in special ed with this budget?
We've not made any changes to the 284,550s. That's noted on the third line down for out-of-district special education. That's money we're carrying within the budget for next year. That's an increase to the, to the general fund. And as you know, we're still planning to fund fairly significant structural gap. Partially an ongoing gap, but partially also as a result of a 14% increase to, to out-of-district tuition. So that amount, I don't have it in front of me, but I know it's over, I believe it's over $500,000 with a plan to use ESAR II and maybe even likely some ESAR III funding on that.
And if we chose to use Mr. Brady's suggestion to just eliminate athletic fees for the next year, and given that I have a three-sport athlete, I hear him on that. Wouldn't that not create a structural deficit in the athletic department if we couldn't sustain that year over year? Like a one-year gift?
No, because this is actual, this is a foundational reduction. That's an ongoing reduction that will be there forever in the personnel line. You were to take that to 48,793 and move that into, not take that reduction and move that amount of money into offsetting any kind of fee reduction, whether it's athletics or transportation or anything else, then that would be there in the budget year over year. But it would be subject to cuts, just like every other budget line is subject to cuts year to year. So.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nixon, did I see your hand up?
It is. And I'm sorry, guys, I'm really under the weather tonight. So hopefully I'll string some cogent thoughts together here. So first of all, I appreciate where Mr. Brady's coming from. Over the years, we've had a number of moments in time where we have raised fees for athletics, both for individual, you know, sports by season, and also we have a max family cap. From time to time, when we've encountered this, this sort of moment, we've actually looked to see what other districts do. Mr. Brady's, I think, has mentioned before, there are some districts that charge no athletic fee. There are some that kind of have tiers based on the relative cost of the sports. And every time the school committee has taken this up, we've had some healthy discussion about it, but ultimately come back and said, we're going to stick with the way we have it. And then regrettably, we kind of held our nose and we raised fees. I believe the last time we did this in any substantive way, we had some really significant support from the Winchester Sports Foundation. They gave us a significant six-figure gift over, I think, two years to address the structural deficit we had in athletics. And, and there was some expectation in accepting that gift. We weren't going to turn around and start raising fees every year. And we've gone a long way without doing that, is my memory, which is good. And going into this town meeting, although we've not yet broached the subject of fees for next school year, I think I have said to the school committee that, you know, I don't have an interest in raising fees. But if there is a delta between whatever school budget we have voted, or which we might vote, and the yellow sheet figure, then it'll be interesting to see what town meeting votes, right? If town meeting votes a budget that's less than what we say we need, we have a gap to make up. And sometimes that does come up in the discussion of fees. So I think there's something to be said for the good fight, if you will, to not increase fees. So I'm certainly there. With respect to Mr. Brady's idea, though, about maybe getting rid of fees entirely. I suppose, I, I feel like that was not something we had talked about as a kind of budget priority in the buildup to January. So there might be other budget priorities that this committee would place value on and that we might want to talk about in the context of this. So maybe that, that part of the question that Peter just addressed is what about other fees? You know, music, for instance, and, and others. So I'm with Mr. Brady in spirit. I do not want to see us raise fees for next school year, period. But I would just remind the committee, while the superintendent is outlining what we're calling savings, it's not really yet a savings in the next fiscal year budget, because that budget hasn't been voted yet. So if we were to take Dr. Hackett's recommendations, we're sort of narrowing that gap between what we vote and what the finance committee just voted last week on the yellow sheet, and there's still a gap there. So it's not yet money of ours to be spent. So I would love to see us get into, like, have a conversation about maybe a strategic goal to lower and ultimately sunset fees. I would love to see us do that, but I feel like that might take more than a fiscal year. And we'd have to balance that initiative in the context of other things that may be important to the committee.
That's at the heart of my question, Mr. Nixon, too, of what other structural gaps we have. And to Dr. Hackett, and I think it was Mr. Hopcroft who brought up fees about, that there are other fees. And I think that we, we may even want to have members of the public be able to weigh in on that as well. Again, having a three-sport athlete, I'm totally with Mr. Brady in spirit about eliminating, eliminating a fee, any fee that we can eliminate for parents. But I'd also want to make sure that when we're addressing fees, it's equitable. Mr. Hopcroft?
Yeah, so I guess as I see it, the question is, do we vote to accept the superintendent's recommendation and lower our budget request? Which is one option. Another option is to look at how we can reduce the burden on parents regarding fees, which I do think should be a broader look at fees, you know, in all areas. And then there are the structural gaps, I guess. You know, that should be, before we start reducing those burdens, be putting a little bit aside to try to close the special ed gap over time. So I guess I, I'm generally supportive of all of these things. Yeah, I think, you know, I'm a little bit nervous about my lack of, of understanding of what all the different fees are across the different areas, as well as, you know, getting a better sense of what obligations we already have before we get to that. You know, and so I guess in my mind, I might prioritize those, you know, reducing the structural gaps first and then moving towards fees. But that's just where my head is.
Ms. Bolanese, thank you, Mr. Hopcroft.
I was just going to say, I think I was sitting and listening to the finance subcommittee meeting when we were talking, or not we, but when the finance subcommittee was talking about setting up a small group to examine the fee structure and to look at other communities and how that was set up. And I think it's important to do that groundwork, that legwork, before making a decision on that. And I guess, piggybacking off of other committee members, I do think it's important to look across what other priorities we may have or what we think may be important, fee structure wise.
Dr. Hackett, you've heard from all the committee members at least once at this point. Did you want an opportunity to weigh in before I take more comments?
Yeah, sure. If I could, and I totally appreciate the conversation. Just to give some context for where, where coming from. The exercise was not to make a reduction to put it somewhere else. The exercise was to make a reduction to reduce the budget. So if we're going to have a conversation around, I'm getting echoes from somewhere, I don't think, I know it's not me. Maybe it's Mr. Nixon. Do you have ring cam on? No?
You're unmuted, though. Mute.
If, if the conversation is, if you'd like, I would appreciate the opportunity, I guess, to say it a different way. And Mr. Nixon's point, well taken. It's not our money to spend yet either. But I would have, I would have liked to, I would like to have an opportunity to come back to you and say, here's what else we would recommend at $248,793. Because a couple of points. One, we didn't, we did not get through, or really, we had other priorities that we had listed that we, that we took off the table as we put the budget together for January. There are other priorities that, while I completely appreciate the conversation around fees, that we would probably would like you to consider in, in conjunction with the conversation around reduction of fees. But I also just wanted to make the point that our FY22 per pupil spending in comparison to other communities across the state, there are 85%, 85% of other school systems spend more than we do. So when we're already at a low per pupil and relatively low per pupil, and while there are all kinds of reasons that's true, there are a lot of other things that if we had more funding that we would be doing and looking to do when we talk about things like program expansion. And I only make that point because resources are scarce. So if we're, if we're going to have the fee conversation, I would love to, I would love to have that conversation around the potential of maybe as part of an override discussion. If, if the community, in fact, is moving in that direction, I would love to see that done through a separate funding source and not in quotations on, you know, off of the operating budget. But again, I don't have a three-sport athlete here and I understand the burden of fees and support that absolutely in spirit. But thank you.
And Dr. Hackett, just to follow up on that. In fact, the last time there was an override, this, and Mr. Nixon will remember, we did look at all of the district-wide priorities and the things that had gone unfunded and under, under, underfunded by the town for years and years and years. So I agree with you that I think that this is absolutely something that as the town, if the town looks towards an operational override, this is an exercise we've done in the past. And certainly that would be something that we could look at as an exercise as part of that. I saw Mr. Nixon and then Ms. Bolanese again, if your hands still up.
Sure, thank you. So, yeah, two other quick points. So with, just with respect to process and moving forward as it pertains to Mr. Brady's suggestion. I don't, given our past practice, I don't believe we need a committee or a subcommittee to study athletic fees. The full committee has done it in the past. It's really just a matter of asking administration to go get some examples for us of how other districts do it. School committees in the past have been pretty quick to absorb the information. And it's nothing we solve in one, you know, in one night at the table. But I think it's a good discussion, frankly, for all five of us to be having publicly. So I would welcome that. And I think we can do that. And if, if individuals need to be tasked to go get information to support that, you know, I'm happy to do my part if somebody wants to give me a task. But back to sort of the main event, which was Dr. Hackett's presentation. I'm supportive of it. I appreciate all the work that went into it. As I said a moment ago, there's, there's still a gap here with, with the yellow sheet. I would, yeah, you know, I'm in the weeds and you know I'm a numbers guy, so I'm saying this tongue-in-cheek, but also just a little seriously. So I'm just, I would just ask that Dr. Hackett give us another dollar. Because the budget we voted was actually 63,445,992. So I would be supportive of Dr. Hackett's recommendation. He gives me another 100 pennies, 63,194,386.
Be my pleasure, Mr. Nixon.
Mr. Brady? Yep, hand or no hand?
I appreciate all the discussion and I definitely see that there are a lot of different opportunities and a lot of different strategies that I think, you know, we could move forward with. So I think for me, part of it is about getting this discussion started and getting people thinking about this. So I am just going to make the motion and it can fall as flat as it wants to. So I'd like to make the motion that we reallocate the budget based on these adjustments and not charge athletic fees for the next school year.
Is there a second? Hearing none, Mr. Brady, I think the motion fails.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. So to get back to the discussion regarding the proposal Dr. Hackett has in front of us this evening, would members like to talk about the reduction that the superintendent has recommended for this evening? Or is anybody prepared to make a motion to accept this recommendation? Given that we, as Mr. Nixon points out, we are still quite a ways away, even with the budget as recommended from what FinCom has had voted the other evening. I believe that was a 336, Dr. Hackett, that they have voted on our budget on Thursday evening. Mr. Hopcroft.
And just to be clear, Dr. Hackett, this adjustment that you're recommending just represents newer information on how the retirements are coming in and doesn't affect any of the current services that we had in our prior budget, right? It's the exact same level of service, just a little bit newer set of information. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, I've said this before, and you know it, you've gone through it many, many times. Some of you, having been on the committee for a while, it is a super early time to have a school committee vote a budget when you, we don't even, you know, at that point, don't even know the retirements. We don't know.
In January, Dr. Hackett.
In January, correct. Only beginning to handle on what the enrollments start to look like. We don't know generally the chapter 78 number, which was pointed out by FinCom that we receive another 138,000 that we can spend it. However, we can only spend it if the town gives it to us. So from my perspective, this budget is also can be supported with 130 some odd thousand dollars less local funds, which in the net is a reduction for the local share of the cost of the budget that we didn't know about when we voted on, when you voted on January 31st. Additionally, you know, the retirement situation has come, become more clear. But if you also recall, we actually signed a memorandum of agreement with the WEA for Unit A specifically, just prior to the December break, and then the job of implementing that contract mid-year for everyone to get the retro pay that they needed to get. And then on top of that, trying to roll everybody forward was was a lot of work, and it was kind of untimely for us in our little business office. So we are much more clear on where we are. This is not a reduction in service. This is maintaining the three elementary section reductions, which, as I said to you, I could be coming back to you and saying we might need to reconsider that. We still don't think that is the case. We think that those reductions will hold. And then on top of that, we we know that we have enough retirements. We have, we're netting out right here, five additional retirements with replacement costs, as discussed, for another 248,793. I do not, I do not think it's insignificant, and I hope that you don't either, that we're reducing the personnel salary line by 603,998. I think that is a point that needs to be made. And I think that, you know, you have done a great job in together working with us administratively to prove that we are being fiscally responsible, that we are showing, while while technically not a reduction in the budget, but certainly a reduction in what we were initially asking for. And we also know that we're at 3.76%. We're not even at inflation. So I think this is a is a solid, good faith effort to show that we understand we're part of the total budget, the total town budget, and we want to be part of that solution, and we're being responsible with with the money. And we also are, I mean, this is a, to your credit, this is a huge positive benefit of the contracts that you settled. I mean, putting in a retirement incentive to allow people to retire who want to retire and then be able to do that kind of replacement. That that $603,000 is a savings every single year for the remainder of this contract. That's, that is $1.8 million that this three year agreement is going to save year over year for for two more years. So when people ask what the cost of implementing the new contract is, the true answer to that lies in how much it also saves in the people that you have in front of you year over year. So I think we should be proud of that.
Not only that, Dr. Hackett, but I want to thank you and the administrative team, not only for keeping on top of the the numbers around these issues, but also that we were able to settle our contracts by being able to work with our union, and credit to them as well. We've settled way ahead of many of our peer districts who might have more uncertainty around these numbers with unsettled contracts going into their town meetings. So credit, credit to all who were involved in that. Mr. Brady.
Take some credit here. I don't take credit. We don't talk about that at home, but thank you.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you. Yes, Frank, I think that retirement incentive was your idea, so I would give you credit for that. But among other things, I apologize for my confusion. I tried to follow along with FinCom's performance earlier, whenever that was, and my understanding was they were proposing. Thank you. My understanding was they were proposing reducing our proposed budget by 400,000, but I guess I'm mistaken. What was the total they were proposing to reduce our proposed budget by?
About 490,000.
Okay, so then why, what people are saying there's still a gap that I don't understand. So if we have 603, if we're, if you're proposing a 603,000 dollar reduction, and they were gonna, they had proposed reducing our budget by 400, how do we still have a gap?
So the additional reduction tonight, Mr. Brady, is 3,000 because we were already carrying the 352, not 390 reduction in the budget that you would, that you adopted in January.
Okay.
It's just this 248,793 and that small adjustment here that represents this reduction. So the gap is the difference between what they're proposing, which is a 3.36% increase in this budget at 3.76, so it's a couple hundred thousand.
So it's the 400 minus the 248.
Right, 490.
Thank you.
Almost, almost 500. And I think, Dr. Hackett, the 600 you're talking about is over the 4.73 that we started at. Is that correct?
It would be, well, either way.
Because the 355 was off the four, the the initial rollover, if you go back a slide. It was out off of that 6904,378.
Yep.
I got it now. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Just, Mr. Brady, if you, if, if, if everybody at the table might not have understood and seen that clearly, it pays to reinforce it for our public, too, right? So thank you. Good question. Are there any other questions about this budget? Or are there any other committee comments about the reduction as proposed today?
I'm happy to make a motion to amend our budget, if you would welcome it, Madam Chair.
I would.
So I move to amend the school committee budget for FY24 from 63,445,992 to 63,194,386, a net increase of 3.76% as presented by Dr. Hackett tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bollanese. I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Bollanese.
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Hackett, and Mr. Rowe, and everyone in central office who has worked hard to bring us these numbers tonight and try to work with the town to bring forward a budget that reasonably funds our schools and services for the next year for students and families and and serves our needs. I am, since we are a little bit out of order, I did not have time at the top of the meeting to be able to take public comment. We had noticed executive session first, so I'm just going to stop and see if there are any members of the community here this evening who are here for public comment. And if they are, we will allow them to speak. If you are an attendee and haven't done this recently, you would just need to raise your digital hand if you are choosing to speak. I recognize Mr. Matthews. Dr. Hackett, can you elevate Mr. Matthews to public comment? So our public comment is for a period of three minutes. It's to speak to items on the agenda. And we welcome you, Mr. Matthews, to be able to have your moment to speak to us.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Mr. Matthews.
Good. My name is Timothy Matthews. I live at 23 Kenwin Road. And I just wanted to commend the committee on the work that they've been doing, the really careful work in collaboration with the district to forward a budget that supports all our students. I've been following quite closely what's been happening over the past couple of weeks, and especially with the macro environment of what's going on right now with education as a sector and the things that are going on in our own families. I think it's important that we show support for our educators, support for our staff who are working so hard to to keep our students on an even keel sailing forward through this, really continuing to be unprecedented time. So thanks so much for that. I also wanted to say that I was struck by Dr. Hackett's comment just a few minutes ago about the funding, the per pupil funding that that our our district has relative to other districts, because I know that was a subjective discussion during the final session last week. And it seems there's a discrepancy between those. And obviously, I know that there's no direct response, but I think it would be really helpful if it were possible at some point, for those of us that are town meeting members, to understand better the sort of discrepancy between superintendents and the the finance committee's assessment of where we stand relative to per pupil funding. But I'd also love to know if it were possible at some point from public information standpoint, what programs we'd like to have if we did have a higher level of funding, or the things that we might be able to offer our community. So thank you all for your work again, and thanks for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We appreciate you joining us today. And with that, Dr. Hackett, I do see our students here. I just want to acknowledge that Mr. Savage is here if he had anything to add before we head into executive session, because we will be able to send him on his way after that.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Charlie.
I don't have much to add, but I do have a few events coming up and a few events around school happening. So as you guys may know, Friday was the last day of fourth quarter, which means that many of our seniors, sadly, but also, I guess, with a tense of happiness to it, have left for their fourth quarter internships. I'm seeing that it's becoming increasingly popular every year, which I personally think is a great thing. It's a really good experience for people to get their work in. But it is always sad to see some of your friends, you know, leave. Along with this, we have NODA, NODA of the Arts, coming up on April 28th, I believe. The day's been bounced around a couple of times, but we would love to see you guys all there, and we're really excited for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie, and thanks for joining us this evening. I know Ms. O'Connor said that she had a commitment earlier tonight, so we miss her, but we're happy to see you. And with.
Can I ask a question of Charlie?
Sure, go right ahead, Mr. Nixon.
Charlie, I forget, forgive me if you shared this with us when you were last with us at Parkhurst. What is the timeline again for you guys to determine who our student reps are going to be next year? So I know you had multiple kids who were interested in doing it. Do you have an idea when that's going to be figured out?
Yes, so I believe all new student council positions, including these two student response, will be chosen by the end of April, I believe. I'm not 100% sure about that, but if not, it'll be early May. And then they will be, we'll be here with them for like the first meeting, just kind of watching on, and they'll take over for us.
Great. Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Charlie. Elle had, Elle had mentioned there might be a transition period of time where we'd welcome you all to the committee meetings before we sadly have to say goodbye to our seniors who've been so involved. The seniors will be also, Mr. Savage and Ms. O'Connor will be attending the Day on the Hill on May 4th with Mr. Hopcroft and myself. And we have been graciously invited to meet with Senator Lewis and Representative Day with the students. So we are looking forward to that as well. Mr. Brady, did you also have a question for Charlie?
I just wanted to thank Charlie. Charlie, when was putting for patients? Was that last Sunday or the Sunday before?
Yeah, that was last Sunday. It was an absolutely great event.
So yeah, I just wanted to recognize that. I know it's been going on for a number of years. Unfortunately, I couldn't convince anyone in my household to go. But I did just want to recognize that it's a great event and appreciate the students and all the work that they do on it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
You're muted.
Thank you.
I was worried that I froze up.
Well, you know. And Ms. Bollanese, before we adjourn to executive session, I think there was something that you had wanted to acknowledge you had noticed me about.
Oh, I was just going to say best wishes and good luck to the the band and the orchestra and the chorus who are going to be going down to Disney World to March perform and participate in recording sessions. So I just hope they have a safe trip and an enjoyable experience.
Special event, we only get once every four years. So hopefully, while you're at Winchester High School sometime, if you're involved in music, you have the opportunity to do that. Thanks, Ms. Bollanese. Any other comments? I would be remiss if not asking anybody else then. Any other comments from any other members before we move on to executive session?
I just know that Elle has joined us. If she had any comments, I don't know if you can see her on her screen.
I cannot, Mr. Hopcroft. Elle, where you caught us just at the end of the meeting. Charlie's updated us on some things, including the transition. Did you, since you've had the opportunity to join us, was there anything that you wanted to add or share with the committee before we adjourn?
I think that pretty much covers everything that's current on the council. Great, thanks, Elle, and thanks for, thanks for zooming in. Oh, of course.
So I can provide just one quick update?
Sure, Mr. Nixon.
Again, not not for debate, but just to let you know that the ball is still sort of moving forward. The Winchester High School gym, you know, we did discuss, I think, during one of our capital updates a month or two ago. We had a good walkthrough last week at the high school with our athletic director and our new DPW director. We have a new DPW director. We got some good information on what Mr. Aria is looking to do now with the gym. This has been revised a little bit from his earlier thoughts back in 2018. This was presented to the EFPBC last night. And by unanimous consent, the EFPBC is seeking to get an architect engaged once again to try to articulate clearly what this vision is, and we can get an updated cost estimate. So hopefully, we'll be able to pull that together quickly. The EFPBC was made aware that if the school committee has any interest in discussing this project in the context of capital priorities, that's a conversation that starts, you know, in May and June. So we've got to be pedal to the metal to make it happen. So that I think officially will now start moving forward. So when I know that we'll have something, I'll be just be in touch with the chair and Dr. Hackett, and we'll try to get that information to you when it's available. That's it.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon, and I think that will fit in nicely to our plan to sort of filtering the the capital projects over the next several months so that we're prepared to vote on those in August as well. There, just so the committee knows, we do have a meeting before town meeting on April 24th. We also have a meeting before town meeting scheduled on April 27th. If the committee is able, this is just a scheduling issue, we may try to move one or two of those meetings just a bit earlier with the hopes of maybe not having the committee have to come out again on the 25th. So that's just a possibility that we're looking at. It's going to be a busy week for school committee members and administration, given we have town meeting on Monday and Thursday. So if there is a way that we can get committee business done before town meeting on Monday and Thursday, we will try to make that happen for you, if everybody's, if that sounds good to the committee. There are no objections. That's what we'll work towards.
Might be bringing my kids, but that's fine.
Okay. Sounds good.
You've been warned.
Maybe we'll, maybe we'll be able to do them by Zoom, and then it might, may be easier to occupy them. So with that, I, we will need to move to executive session. We have purpose three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the WEA. Purpose two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union administrative personnel. And purpose four to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect there too. Thank you, Mr. Brady.
And to clarify, just to clarify, we will not reconvene in public because our only next item would be to adjourn, correct?
That, that would be my next statement, correct?
Good. Oh, okay.
And school committee members, you can find your link for executive session in school committee.
So I'm going to send you a new link, a Zoom link. As soon as we adjourn this, then I'll be able to sign off this and I'll, you, I'll get that link right out to you.
So I'll second that full motion.
So I need a roll call vote. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bollanessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous and we have adjourned to executive session. Thank you to everyone for joining us today.
Good night, Elle. Good night, Charlie.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.